Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And welcome. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Banco, roll call, please.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Britton.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. We do not have anything in presentations tonight because Mr. Cherry is in Erie with our students that are performing for the Music Educators Conference. So we'll move on to our first public comment period. Brad and Dave, do you have anything to say tonight? Seeing nobody moving to the microphones and seats, we'll move on. Board President's Communication, I have nothing there either. We did not have an executive session tonight, so this could be the quickest meeting on record for us. Because our first area, Comprehensive Planning, that committee was actually canceled tonight because Mrs. Maylie is also in Erie with our students. So, Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Herman, I know you have a lot to report from your meeting tonight, so go ahead.
Our meeting was also canceled. But we will have rescheduled ours for May 8th at 6:00 PM here, and that will be with Mrs. Croom, the new Assistant Superintendent. So once she's on board, we'll get her up to speed and throw her to the lines, so to speak. And I think it's going to be here in a boardroom, I'm assuming.
She starts the first?
On the first, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Okay. Mr. Emmig and Mr. Rauhouser and Mrs. Britton, Facilities.
We had an extensive discussion tonight on some different items. First of all, from two items from the previous minute meeting, we do have our Eagle Scout or our Boy Scout working on the shelves for the drum line in the band room at the high school for his Eagle Scout award. And the softball school board is still in limbo. They're still trying to get more information on that. So as of right now, that's on hold as well. Couple of things that we did talk about tonight was, Mrs. Britton had brought up, along with Mr. Nelson, that they were approached about Tri-Town football. They want to have a Dover youth football feeder program, which would break away from Tri-Town. And they talked to Mr. Nelson about needing a field. Then Mr. Nelson had talked to Mr. Leathery as well, and they're looking at possibility of the intermediate school property close to the woods. The parties for this Dover youth football will address the board in coming weeks. And there is no cause to the district. What they want to do is put up gold posts for this football, but they're going to put the sleeves in the ground that way when we can take the football field and use it for baseball or whatever, they can take the gold posts out and then fill in. Anything else, Mr. Nelson, on that?
That was North Salem, right?
Oh, North Salem. All right. So that's at North Salem.
So are you saying this is a split out of Tri-Town, an organization?
It's my understanding that the people from Dover that participated in Tri-Town would like to separate. And I don't know if, I don't think they're officially, officially, I think this Dover youth football is a new entity itself, but it is the people currently involved with Tri-Town that are starting their own organization. And it will be kind of like, for those of you who are familiar with the soccer program, the Dover United Soccer Program is like a feeder program where, you know, they develop them up to the high school level, where it's my understanding this is going to be the same thing where the football, they just feed them up through the high school and develop them so that they are, when they get to the high school, those people at the high school know what skills they have and are familiar and are expected, you know, a lot like soccer.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And then, of course, you all should have this on board docs, the D-10 request for 2017-2018. The items on here, we want to add video surveillance cameras to the stadium, more or less for security purposes so we don't have intruders. Now, these are all estimates that Mr. Nelson has on here. So it's $20,000 for that. Install new blinds in the remaining classrooms, this is building-wide, about $12,650. Install new blinds in the remaining classrooms, building-wide as well. Oh, the first one was for North Salem, this one is for Libe, for $5,000. Replace the hot water heater at Libe, roughly $5,000, and in-house would do that. Install a driveway to connect the front parking lot with the rear parking lot on the Emmerdale Road side of the building. What is intended for this is that we're trying to eliminate keeping parent pickup from being out on the street. So what Mr. Nelson has come up with is to connect about a 60-foot roadway going across the playground and behind the building and coming around so we don't have a backup on Emmerdale Road. And that's roughly $15,000 he's projecting. And what they would do is they would put a gate or something across each entrance so when the kids are out playing, no cars will come up through there. And if this passes, they want to have this in effect for next year. Three other items is a bucket truck, which is $10,000. These we brought up before. And then he needs to replace one of the 1999 Chevy pickup trucks with a lift gate because they have two, but the one is not capable to do any snow plowing. And then the last item is, he needs a replacement of a dump bed on the 2005 Chevy dump truck, which is roughly $7,000. So it's roughly almost $105,000 for these items. These are all just estimates, and this would all come out of Capital Reserve as far as the D-10 request. One thing that Mr. Nelson had done was he tried to change the speed limit out along Libe from 25 to 15. And with everybody he conversed with, PennDOT Township says it is the school district's responsibility.
It was Weigels Town.
Weigels Town. Oh, was it Weigels Town? I'm getting all these schools wrong tonight, ain't I?
Fox Run Road.
All right. Fox Run Road. So the township said it's our responsibility to foot the bill for all this. So, if you want to add anything else to that? Mr. Nelson?
Well, yeah. I found documentation from back in 2009.
Nine.
That's a lot. But basically, when we interviewed the town that had stated that, from PennDOT, that the signs would be the responsibility to purchase, maintain, and install by Dover Township. The township forces, you know, saying they didn't do it, so I'm asking for, we have to pay. So the signs aren't the issue, it's the traffic stuff that people have to, that's pretty expensive to try.
Is there a particular reason why we have such a large number of parents picking up their students versus utilizing our busing program that we have here? Because I know, you know, when I can go past Libe, they're lined up down Emmerdale Road, and I didn't know if there's a specific reason, if we have an issue with the transportation that we're providing from a busing standpoint, if that's...
The change we made at Weigels Town, if you've been out there, we don't have any cars on the block for a road anymore. They're all well off the road. And hopefully, we'll get that same result at Libe, maybe Libe will get the same result from all of them. So, just to me, it seems like, why wouldn't you slow down 15 mile an hour in front of the school? I thought that was sort of a standard, maybe I'm wrong, but I just thought that was...
Why do people not stop for bus stops or buses with railroads on here?
Yeah. And I see it on a daily basis. I mean, people fly down Fox Run Road even before they change the traffic pattern, when I would be waiting to turn right back towards 74 out of the parking lot. And I couldn't see the cars coming because the cars that were waiting were blocking the view, and people just still fly down that road. So, I mean, I think it's not a bad idea. I mean, it definitely is warranted, I think.
Could you describe this new driveway at Libe a little bit for me so I can get more of a visual as to the flow of it?
At Libe, if you're familiar with the current parent drop-off, they come in that small round parking lot.
Right.
Well, as you would come into that parking lot, you'd still come in the same way, but you would bear off to the right, you would back along the right side of the building, or you need to go over the inside of the building and connect to the playground parking lot back.
Okay.
And then that comes all the way around the building to the opposite side and comes out the front.
So you go on the, like, outside perimeter of the playground areas, so you're going out towards Emmerdale and around, sort of making a half-circle kind of thing?
Can you draw that for us? No.
He did an excellent job of drawing for us, though.
That was a joke.
I can't draw.
So then, if my understanding is correct, they would come in and then actually circle around, and then they would drop the students off, would be on the Oakland Road side?
Oakland Road.
They would drop off?
Yeah. If you're at all familiar with that school, if you would go in and go around to the back, like, especially if you're going back to the gym, you go in on the left side of the school and you wrap around, right after you start back along the side of the school, there's an overhang that comes out from a door, pretty good size, or you could probably park a car or two out of anything. That's the door we want to take those car riders in, so they'll have some protection from elements as soon as they get out of the car. And take them in that side door, they'll be ready in the school, separate the bus riders from the car riders, and the buses from the cars, and should be much better.
Which side are they going to exit out on? Because I know the circle, that's where all the buses go.
Right. They will exit where the buses exit, but the buses will go between...
Before they go. Okay.
So the driveway on the Libe side, then, on the Emmerdale Road side of Libe, the driveway would be close to the building, or the driveway is going to be in the grass on the outside perimeter?
It would be close to the building. The driveway would go between the playground and the building.
That's what I was kind of thinking. I wasn't sure you could do a...
And what we would do, then, is put up some sort of, we haven't really been able to decide, some sort of a barricade on each end of that driveway, so that once parent drop-off is finished in the morning, we close off on both ends, so no cars can come through there when the kids are out playing in the playground.
So then similarly, it would look similar to what North Salem has with that little path around the building?
Yeah. And their driveway, you have to go through the building and the playground in the back.
Right.
So it'd be very, very similar to that, just kind of, we'd have to put that short piece of driveway in.
Right. And I just want to make one point. Dover's not the only one that has the parent pickup problem. I see it every day. So, it's just not Dover. Okay. And I know that this is up for a vote tonight, but before we get to that, I have one more item. We want to talk about Crawletown. The current selling price for Crawletown is $469,000, roughly 9.5 acres. What we have to do to keep that building as a year-round is, we need security, we need heat, electric, mowing, and there are times we have to pump water from the well. And we checked it out, we're spending $7,000 roughly a year for heating that building. Electric is during the winter, $270 a month, $150 over the summer. And to mow that, it's 10 hours, roughly 500 hours each time we mow that. So we had talked about that and thought, now, I guess three weeks ago, we had somebody come in and contact that, contact the realtor. I think we've had nine different parties interested. We feel that we should do something about lowering the selling price of that just to get rid of the building, so we don't have to invest all this money. Because we were talking with Mr. Nelson upstairs, and right now, it's a lot of mowing taking place, and you're having two guys over there to mow Crawletown. We could use those 10 hours here to help mow, so we don't have to constantly be backlogged. So that's the recommendation, is that we should consider lowering the price of Crawletown.
What has been the track record on those that have looked at it? There's been a number of entities that have looked at that, correct?
Yeah, we've had, I think, a group looked at it for possibly a church, we had a group look at it for possibly apartments.
Machine shop.
Machine shop?
Car repair.
Has there been any consistency in their feedback of why they've decided not to? I mean, is it a money thing?
I haven't heard.
Well, how far away is the public sewer and public water?
There is there.
It's not even near?
No.
That's probably the problem right there. Nobody wants it, not for that, especially for that price.
Yeah.
It would cost too much just to get it there.
Well, you could, they don't even have a building.
Oh, really?
In the middle of nowhere.
But I think you're absolutely right, the public water's not there, the public sewer's not there, so you're running the safety tank, you're running the well. Just the location, it's not close to anything, it's not close to any major roads, it's sort of isolated, so when you start looking at doing some sort of business there, what would your draw be to get people to come there? So I think it's limited on your people that are in the interest.
Well, has anybody looked into, I know they talked about possibly putting solar panels back there, or is there any talk about that again, or...
Well, the solar panel field, I talked about it a little bit, has to be within two miles of your location you're going to use the solar.
So you would have to sell it?
My original thought was, put it out there, we can use it, but it has to be pretty much on the same campus you're going to use it.
Okay.
How much do you think realistically we'd have to lower the price to get somebody to purchase it? I mean, with all these things that we're talking about, it sounds like it's going to be a tough thing just to sell, period.
I think those are conversations we need to have with our realtor. I would suggest that we take the next month, we have those conversations with the realtor, and come back with a recommendation then at the May board meeting.
But I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, since this is an item we talked about, what the expense is to us for a building that's actually not being used. So, Mrs. Britton, anything else under Facilities? Mr. Rauhouser, anything under Facilities?
Yes, talking about Crawletown, I've requested over the months about the agent to come to board reading, but he's, for some reason, never gets here or never invited. I mean, we haven't seen him for two years. He never showed up when we signed him up, and I was disappointed in that. And the other thing is, we don't get no feedback as to what the offers are. If anybody's offering, you know, ask for offers to be made. It is located in downtown Crawletown, but you don't want to close your eyes when you go through Crawletown, or you'll miss the town. And it has cost us, we're figuring up here tonight, we have over $100,000 invested in that school since we closed it. And it's cost us money, where if we could sell it, even for $150,000, get it on the tax record, that would bring in money instead of going out. So there, we're losing money. And like Terry said, we could use that manpower down here because we're short manpower as it is, and less stress on the mowers. So it's something that we need to push. It's just sort of like lying there, somebody, you know, it'd cost an awful lot to tear it down. So whatever we can get for, we'd be ahead to become an asset instead of a debt.
I think we'll leave Mrs. Banco, Mr. Cherry, speak with the realtor, come back with a recommendation, maybe even have the realtor here and come up with a recommendation, then we can take it from there.
The realtor should be here.
Yep. So if nobody has anything else, Mr. Eifert? I think there is a motion about approv...
I would like to ask a question, then, if I could, at some point. The bucket truck that was on there, did we not approve that already, or am I thinking wrong? I mean, that was on a D-10 list before that I thought we approved. No?
No, we didn't. We, last year, we didn't approve it last year.
We just talked about it. That's all we talked about.
Yeah, I remember talking about it, but I thought we had approved that. The other comment I will make is, talking about all the safety and travel and stuff, again, bring up the high school student parking lot, and the fact that there's only one ability for access in and out of that parking lot, and it's all coming towards the building. I mean, there is an upper and a lower, but if you've ever been there during football nights, it's pretty dark, and a lot of cars, a lot of kids, and it is definitely a hazard looking at. You know, eventually, I don't know what, you know, if that building's always going to be there, maybe if it's not, it makes sense to exit out there, but it's definitely a concern of mine, doing something different.
I think we had talked about that before, trying to put an exit in there, a gully?
Yeah, it's a pretty good elevation.
That we would have a problem trying to have an exit road going out the back?
I know, I know that came up that way, and I know that was the, kind of, the death blow to that at that time, but I'm just making the board aware that that is a real hazard that happens there. It's a very real, you know, risk to the kids walking, there's a lot of foot traffic coming through there when there's cars coming in and out.
Okay. Any other questions?
Talking about Facilities, that reminds me, I said something to Mr. Nelson about when you pull out at the high school on the side closest to square, you can't see up Canal Street. And he said, so I contacted PennDOT. They said their recommendation is, you be in the neighbor, try and be navel-y to them, and ask them if they would trim it or if we can trim it. Because I come, what did I come back here for, one morning? I think I brought my generator back one morning for the egg shop. Well, you pull up there, and like with a pickup truck, it's a little bit longer, you just can't see it. Now, I seen tonight when I come, it's harder because it's green, it got leaves on, it sticks out about three to four feet in front of the house, it would be trimmed back a little, and you could see through the porch. And that's something that needs addressed as much as many people went out there, and Mr. Nelson thought at first it was our bush, but then he found out it wasn't our bush. So I don't know if we should recommend for somebody to go see them and ask them kindly if they would consider trimming it or have the school trim it to their specifications, but it's something that I think it needs addressed as far as safety.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the enclosed D-10 project listing for the 2017-2018 school year.
No move.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Banco. Next up, Human and Fiscal Resources, Mr. Cook.
We met this evening and talked about a number of things that are going to be coming up in the May board meeting for your approval and consideration. I'll just run down through the line items that we talked about. We passed the preliminary budget on Tuesday night. Within that preliminary budget were some additional things to consider, which we'll have to finalize next month. Intent will be to finalize the budget next month and move on, but in the meantime, there's a few things there that we'll still have to nail down. Preliminary budget approval on Tuesday night was done in basically a putting it out there as part of the process, getting it out and making it available for viewing. Some of the things we talked about that will be coming up, that we will have to discuss and finalize is the tax rates, Homestead-Farmstead exclusion. We also had, talked a little bit about insurance approvals that always come up here in the spring, so that'll be on the May agenda for approval. More information will be coming along the lines of, you know, when we get those rates in place, but right now, it's looking pretty favorable. Gladfeller Insurance, who does our shopping around, and they're very good about looking for good deals, good rates, and, you know, and they continue to do that for us. So more information in May. We talked a little bit about our auditor renewal. Give you a little bit of background there. Our current auditor, that we've been using for a number of years, has been a very valuable asset to the district here, and they've been working very hard, along with our business office, to get, you know, things in line the way they need to be. A few years ago, there was a few things that were just a little bit out of whack there, so they've been working on getting things back in line, and they've been working hard to do that. In the renewal process, we had talked about possibly putting an RFP out there to just shop around and see, you know, what else is out there and what the pricing for different entities would be. That did not happen this year, but in place of that, Jen had a conversation with our current auditor and kind of got their opinion on the cost of what, you know, their services to the district are. It was determined that our costs were a little higher than most other districts, and there was a discussion that ensued as a result of that. And the response was, basically, in cleaning up some of the prior issues, there was additional expense created as a result of that. So some of the additional expense that we have over and above other districts, that it ties back to that. However, moving forward, they are dropping their expected costs to the district by about $9,000 a year. So knowing that a lot of that is behind us now, you know, they're rolling their rates back, their expected rates back, there's always some tweaks that can happen throughout the auditing process, so it's not a concrete number, but what they're offering to us actually places them below the median costs in districts around us. So knowing that, the committee felt that it's not really necessary to put it out for RFP, that it makes sense to move forward. They've done a great job for us, and so that's going to be on our May agenda. We talked about the food services budget. There's a couple bits of information there. It's worth noting that our food services here in the district are operating in the black, that I know we hear from other districts at times when food services are operating in the red, and it starts to raise questions about outsourcing and whether or not it makes sense to keep it in-house. Well, our food services are actually operating in the black, so kudos to Mrs. Curry and those that are involved in keeping that up to speed. So we're in good shape there, operating at a, what was it, about $20,000?
The budget gives us about an $18,000 surplus for next year.
Surplus for the year.
Which will be used to fix any equipment or anything like that in the future.
Yeah. Looking ahead, there is a federal mandate of five cents a meal increase, both secondary and elementary level for next year, so it's looking like $275 for secondary and $270 for elementary. That's regardless of whether we're operating in the black or not. That's pretty much just a mandate we have to follow.
Wait a minute. So we're mandated by the federal government to continually raise our lunch prices, whether we need to or not?
It's actually, yes.
That's ridiculous.
It's actually part of the National School Lunch Program. We have to go on the PDE site and put in our information, and it's actually a calculator of what your lunch prices should be. When the calculation came through, when we did the calculation this year, the required price is $277, and you have the option to go down to either the lower five or the higher five, so we took that down to the $275. Unfortunately, it happens every year. Last year was 10 cents. This year, it's, we could have went up 10 cents, but we, you know, only decided to go up 5 cents. And it actually does put us at the rate of approximately our reimbursable lunch for the National School Lunch Program. I know, it's hard to swallow. I have problems with it sometimes, too.
It's real hard, real hard to swallow. I mean...
I mean, we're not making hundreds of thousands of dollars by any means.
Sure.
We're really close to breaking even. And what some other districts do that are operating in the red, actually, that we haven't done yet, and I've had these conversations with Mrs. Curry, is they, some districts charge a lot of their indirect costs over to their cafeterias, too. So say Mr. Nelson's staff fixes something in the cafeteria, they allocate those costs to the Food Service Fund. to the food service fund for, like, the wage costs and everything over. We don't do that at this point. So, I mean, that's something that we would maybe consider going down the road. You're not supposed to make money on food service. You're just supposed to be a breaking even operation.
Are all the schools same price as us? Do you know?
No. No.
They higher or lower?
I haven't, I haven't looked at the numbers lately, and I can definitely get that information for, but I think it's all over the board. And we did talk at our committee meeting about a grant program is called CEP or Community Eligibility Program. And if you are, you have to hit a certain rate of free and reduced lunch that are directly certified to be able to then be eligible for all the kids in that building to receive free breakfast and free lunch, no matter whether those kids are designated as, you know, free and reduced kids. So we're hoping that we can benefit off of some of that in the future.
Yeah, that was, I was going to mention that as well, that that range was around 40%, I believe you shared, right? So 40% of the kids would qualify for free and reduced lunch, then it would be made available to all the students in that particular building. So we do have quite a few that do, are eligible, but there probably are a lot that are eligible and just don't file the applications that could make it, you know, could make a benefit for all involved. So just want to throw that out there, if you're watching, you know, that there's a value to that. It's not always an easy thing to sign up for, but it is available and it's out there. We also talked about PSBA dues and membership. Right now, we have the Learn Pass, we have a number of different things that we're using through PSBA. We don't have the rates yet for renewal on that, but that is a yearly or an annual renewal, and that'll be coming up as well. Some more information to follow on that. So I think that's all I had. Nate, did I capture?
I think you got it all.
Okay. All right. So a lot of things coming up in May that we'll be voting on, that, you know, we don't necessarily have all the information, but we'll have it ahead of the meeting.
Any questions?
I have a comment on about the food service, nothing about to do with the service, but what the government dictates as to what they have to serve. I know right now the Dairy Association is trying to get milk back in school instead of colored water, because it would be beneficial to the kids, but they feel if they basically drink colored water, it's healthier than having a little bit of protein and fat in. And that's mandated by the federal government.
Anybody else? Okay, Safe and Supportive Schools, Mr. DeShaw.
Next meeting's April 27th at 8:00 a.m., and the drill is May 11.
All right, Missilanius, do we have any other comments or observations from our board members tonight?
Yes, speaking of PSBA, there's a town hall meeting coming up in Mechanicsburg, where they're going to have different senators and congress, or whatever there, that, and I was trying to find it because I, because one of the members from York Suburban is a director for PSBA, and she sends me the email, so, and I can't find it right now. But there is a town hall meeting coming up. Soon as I find it, I'll let you know what it is.
I have it here. It is.
Oh, did you get that?
Yeah, I'm looking for the Mechanicsburg one. May 25th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Attending will be Senator Mike Fulmer, and invited were Senator Mike Reagan and Representative Hattie Kim.
Yep, that's him.
So, May 25th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Mechanicsburg Headquarters of PSBA. Okay, anybody else?
Can I, I wanted to make a comment in this, yesterday when we voted on the budget, we had voiced concerns about the nurse and the custodial issues. And I did vote in favor of the budget, you know, I want to make sure the process moves along, but especially, the more I thought about it, the more it concerns me with the nurse aspect. And having adequate staff who is, who are trained for EpiPen or CPR, and I don't know, Dennis, I don't know if you could, maybe if you guys know, who would know what the requirements are for teachers? Do you have to be CPR certified? So just something I kind of wanted to think about is, you know, I know, especially having a child with allergies, luckily, my son's not extremely sensitive, but there are kids who look at a peanut and will go into anaphylactic, I mean, not literally, but, you know, it's pretty sensitive, and time is of the essence, and that just really concerns me, especially if we don't have somebody in the building that, where there's nobody to deal with that kind of emergency. So I just.
In the Human and Fiscal Resources Committee meeting tonight, we actually had some conversations around all of the discussions that we had the other night, you know, related to personnel shifts and things like that. And we've asked Mrs. Banko and Ken to come back with some more information for the board as to what are the specific roles of, you know, individuals, what are their actual responsibilities? You know, how does that compare to when we invest a lot of money in the Skyward program? What has that relieved, you know, in the way of administrative tasks, things like that that are done on a daily basis? So we've asked for more background information on that so that we can make some better decisions as it comes up in May at this point. So watch for some more to come out from the two of them on that, then.
That'd be great, because I know, especially Weiglestown, which where I'm familiar with, the kids who have peanut allergies are kind of put at a table and, you know, apart from everybody else, and they can have friends, sit with them, but sometimes those friends have peanut that, you know, it's not, and I'm not saying, you know, we have to, I just, I just want to make sure somebody's there if anything comes up, that that's my concern.
Okay, so, right in line with that, I went and did my duty yesterday. I got some information. I asked about the aides, I asked how they were utilized, and I was told that they have about a two-hour block where they're in the cafeteria and on the playground, but the rest of the day, these are all, I don't know the terminology they use, like educational aides. There is no more where the aides are in the aides room. The aides are in the classroom all day, working with groups. So they're working on a lot of the tier-three children, and I don't know exactly how much this will affect it, but I think if any, any help you can get from anybody in a building to help the kids that really need it, I hate to take that away. I really do.
I think with the presentation that we saw last night, it wasn't necessarily, we're changing numbers overall.
It was hours.
It was hours, but we were also talking in our committee about boots on the ground, and it was actually more effective for, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Weisling, but rather have one full-time, or it's better for us to have two part-time aides, because you can better manage that, you have more coverage with the two. Am I correct?
That's correct. An example was, we've had some situations where we had full-time aides, and they had just become full-time over the course of several years as hours were added to them and things like that. And then, once they retired, they resigned or moved on, then we replaced them with two part-time people, and we're better able to achieve things with more hands necessarily than limitation of with one person, because the overlapping of their part-time hours actually still provides us with more people over that lunchtime hour, but then we're able to extend the hours because combined, they might have an eight or an eight and a half hour day covered because of their individual hours. So we're able to get them there earlier in the morning to cover some, like supervision of children as they're arriving, or that kind of thing. Have them overlap over the middle part of the day when their needs are, when their time is most needed for coverage of lunch and recess, where we have the largest number of students needing supervision, and then that part-timers then extended their hours that they're here oftentimes at dismissal time. So we've really benefited. That's just my example, where, now, you know, we're all sensitive about that part, that full-time person who is receiving benefits, you know, that we're sensitive about that, what that does in their lives, but the reality is that all the needs and where our aides are being pulled in classroom and helping the children, the more hands we have, the better.
Okay, then I guess what I, what I need to ask for is for everybody to give their opinion, like, what works for you, maybe doesn't work somewhere else, or maybe you could help somebody to understand how that works better. Okay, that, all right. Thank you. And the other thing was the secretaries. And I did ask them, I said, how does this work when there's only one of you in the office? And Chris Rupp, Mrs. Rupp, said that when Mrs. Hoover is at lunch, shh, Mrs. Rupp gets nothing done, because all that she's doing is answering the phone or bussing people in through the doors, and that they can sometimes get up to 50 emails a day from parents. Parents send an email and, well, you know, I don't know if my child has this, or could you please let me know about that? So I was concerned about that, too, and I think that's another one I'd like some information on from other people. To see, I know that Mrs. Milford is by herself at Live, so I think maybe that needs to be figured out as to, you know, what's, what works for her and isn't working for others. The time I was there, there were so many people coming in and out of the door in the short amount of time that I was there. They had somebody register, they have, they sometimes have in a week's time five kids registering, either to come in or to go out, and Chris takes care of all that. So then there's nobody unless Chris is, Mrs. Rupp, excuse me, Mrs. Rupp is working with that person or has to say, excuse me, I have to get the door, and then they're running to the door constantly, or answering the phone, or whatever else. So, you know, I have concerns about, I always want to save money, but I have concerns about messing things up.
This is where we have inconsistencies across the district.
Yes.
Because to your point, we have Deb Milford by herself at Live, which is one of our highest enrollment elementaries, you know, and she's doing it on her own. So how are we not being consistent across the district in the activities that each of these folks are doing? She's able to do it, you know, so what's the difference here? We've got to figure some of that out.
And I think that's something we need to ask.
And that's the reason we had that conversation at committee, that we need a little more background understanding as to how each person's operating, how it's going, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, we talked about it at one of the meetings, and the next executive meeting, we need one of the law solicitors or, I mean, law firms to present a presentation in May and one in June, because in June, we need to figure out who we're to have. So one of them should, we figure have one one month and one another month, and that's up to Mr. Cherry and Mrs. Banko to figure out which one comes first and which one's second. And then we have to make a decision as to how we're doing, because that we discussed about, you know, what they have to offer, and since we have two right now, we're to stay with two, and one takes care of this and one takes care of that, or we go with one. That's why I'm just pointing that out, so it gets on next month's agenda.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none? Anybody in the back row have anything else they'd like to add for public comment? All right. If not, our future meetings, we have our Board Action Meeting, May 16th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. Board Committee Meetings are May 18th at 6:00 p.m., and the Board Planning Meeting at May 18th at 7:00 p.m. So if there's nothing else for tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes? Yes, opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you.